This little interview of Hanson Water Department. I'm Don Howard Gilamato and Bill Gavie here, water commissioners. I got on the board five years ago and I'm a water man. I've been working on water since 1957, so I've been a few years working in water, different contractors that I worked with. Hanson is fortunate now to have two watersheds. They have a watershed that runs between the water tank and the Whitman Town Line on Route 58, a kind of diagonal there, and it runs, and there's about 60 percent of it in the Taunton watershed and about 40 percent of it is in the North River watershed. Well Hanson has been pumping since 1982 out of the Taunton watershed. There's four wells down there and they pumped it from 1982 to 1999, just pumping directly from the pumps directly into the water main. And then in 1999, the water tank was constructed so that they could have a constant pressure without the town, through the town. It's a million gallon tank, so that the pressure is equalized throughout the whole town. Well, when I came on board and my son lives up off of Puritan Drive and there's a little brook that runs by his house there that runs into the Indian Head River, that comes from the area that I'm going to be talking about and Doug Martin's going to be talking about where we're going to try to put in two new wells. But that little brook runs 365 days a year. So something in my mind clicked a little bit and the area that we're going to be talking about tonight also was tested back in the late 90s, but nothing was done with it. And why we're trying to do it is because we've been pumping 500 to 600 gallons most of the winter, a day out of the Crystal Springs area. And in the summertime, sometimes it goes up to 800, 850,000 gallons. There's plenty of water there and it works. But Hanson's going to be here for a long time. And while we got two watersheds, why we're doing this now is because that way we're going to be pumping out of two watersheds if these wells turn out to be fine. And it'll be easier on the aquifers that are underneath the ground. So that's why we're here tonight. I wish there was more people, but I'm glad Carol's here and it's televised and it can be rebroadcast throughout the town. So without further ado, I think Mr. Clemens is going to be here too sometime.
He's right here.
Is he? Hi Phil, I didn't see you. I didn't see you. So just to go on, Doug was here last week explaining to the, first of all, I want to say, we are not touching anybody's land in that area, not one stinkin' little piece. It's all going to be working with Mr. Clemens and conservation. It's all going to be done on conservation land and Phil's working with us. So that the roadway that's going to go in, it's only going to be like a 12-foot road approximately going in there. And what had happened is that road will be connecting to some of the other roads and paths that are in the area. If there's no water from the wells and we don't get it, the people that live in the area are going to have a walkway for the rest of their life or whenever it is. But hopefully, we're going to wind up getting a couple nice wells in there, because I believe they're going to be 400 feet.
At least, yeah.
Two 400-foot drilled wells into the water table. So without further ado, Doug, you can go on and explain to them so that they'll do it in here and on the TV.
Yep. Yeah, like Don said, the water board got us involved back in the 90s, 93 and 94 to be exact, where we performed two different studies. The first one in 93 was a fracture trace analysis to kind of see which areas in town would warrant further groundwater investigation for bedrock wells. And then in 94 is a follow-up survey to that to further locate and prioritize areas that we did find in 93. So through those reports, there were a bunch of areas found. Time had passed and I think some areas were investigated back at that time as well. Different things from not enough public land within the Zone 1 that DEP requires, which is a, so Zone 1, for those that don't know, is a 400-foot zone around the well point where it would need to be conservation or pristine land. So some of the sites that they had found back in the 90s didn't meet all those criteria. So kind of fast forward to today, about a couple of years back, the board brought us back on to further evaluate some of those sites again and look and see if there was any changes. There were three sites that we looked at. Area 5, which we're talking about today was one of them. There was another one up by Indian Head Brook and Pembroke. And another one, I think down, Area 4 was down by the school.
The middle school off of Route 58.
Yeah. So quickly, we were able to kind of eliminate the one down middle school because they have a big septic system out there and it just wouldn't fit within DEP's criteria. And similarly, for Area 1 up in the corner, it was just the area, the Zone 1 wouldn't have fit entirely on public lands. So they would have had to go for conservation restrictions from private homeowners, which we don't want to do. So here we are with Area 5. Once we determined that Area 5 was still viable, we kind of wanted to pinpoint better where we should, you know, do our test bedrock wells. So we completed another survey, electroresitivity survey, which sent signals down into the ground and it kind of pinpointed where groundwater was most likely to be. So based on that, we were able to identify two locations that, as you can see on this figure up here, that were, met the criteria that we were looking for and that being that the 40-foot zone around each of the well points would be within, totally within the conservation land and high enough ground that they're outside of wetlands and whatnot, you know, the wells themselves. So once we had that information, we were able to go out and survey the property. This is where we are here. We surveyed the property and determined our best access route into the area to get at the two well locations. As part of that, working with Conservation Commission, we did a tree inventory to determine some of the trees that we would have to take down, as well as we flagged the wetland resource areas and that kind of thing. During the tree inventory, I'm sure Phil will talk about it, but we found an old colonial red oak. Is that correct? Yeah.
Pretty close.
Pretty close. So originally, our plan was to kind of come closer into this way, but because we found that red oak, you know, working with conservation, we wanted to save that. So we're kind of coming out and staying on the high ground and then coming into the well locations. So basically, the plan is to construct this access driveway once we get all our approvals in place, which would give the well drilling rig access into both of those locations. They would do their drilling over the course of a couple of weeks. And then at the end of the day, we would have test production wells. We would conduct a 24-hour test on each well and discharge that water out over to here to those catch basins, which would eventually go down to the drainage ditch and then out. The purpose of that is to, one, let us know what the quality of the water is obviously and two, the quantity. And once they know those items, then there's further steps that the Water Commission's going to need to take to permit those and get final source approval. And then if treatment's needed, then there's other things that we'd have to do at that point. But right now, we don't even know if we're going to get enough water or if it's going to have good quality. So our first step is like Don had said, is to construct the access driveway, which in the end, if nothing happens or even if we do have actual production sources, will serve to benefit the existing trail system that's already in the area. It will serve as a fire access road in case, you know, if ever needed. It will be blocked off to everyday vehicle traffic. There'll be a vehicle control gate, some boulders around the gate itself, hopefully mitigate any dirt bikes and the like of going in there. And then the water department, if they do become full wells, the water department would have access into that area as needed. It's not an everyday thing to be as they need to get out there. I think that's it for me. And then if you have any questions or anything else.
Have anybody got any questions?
I do.
Yes.
I have nine questions.
Okay.
But I don't need to ask all nine of them honestly. I'm happy to say that my piece of property is in the upper left-hand corner of that map as it now exists, right next to the access road.
That's going in from East Washington Street?
No, Opine Drive.
I mean, yeah, going in from East Washington Street in Opine Drive.
That's correct. And then you go left up that road.
Well, it goes right and then it goes left, right?
Well, I'm talking about from Opine Drive. I'm at 33 Opine, that's not, this is not really important. That's not one of my priorities, but.
Is it?
There's a.
All I can tell you, I'm going on the basis of this map, which is, and I am right here.
He's right here.
Right where the hook's on. It's where you have your temporary road going in.
Yeah. Right here.
I'm right here.
Right here, okay.
Yeah.
Right in here, this is where there's a 40-foot easement that goes on the conservation land.
Sure.
And.
It's not on my property.
No, that's what I mean. That's not on your property.
Yeah, no, it's not.
And, well, that's what I'm saying. We don't want to bother anybody's property. But this is the best point of access to get into the area where we're going to propose the wells. And this is what we want. We want to know why, you know, I don't know whether you want, don't want the road there or.
Well, my wife is getting the hospital list and she's lucky about that, but she's not here. But I'm not, you know, I'm not kind of yelling, screaming and causing a lot of problems. I just have some questions. And one of the questions was whether there was no access whatsoever from either East Washington Street or State Street. Now, I've walked up there and there seemed to be private property all the way.
Right, if you go up.
It's shorter in from, it would be shorter in from East Washington Street than I think flatter.
I'll answer that.
State Street's the shortest one, but there's no access there.
Yeah. So we did, you know, as part of this, we did look at a couple of different access points. One was from this area. I had, it's not shown on here, but, yeah, you can kind of see it on this one. There's, DEP has, you know, designated wetlands in this area and I think, as we've said in prior conservation hearings, is that, you know, from our experts going out, this was kind of understated. So we weren't able to get in this way just because it would have went right through the well. We also looked at coming in from the south, which was our other location over here. Obviously, that was the furthest away. We also looked at coming in on this location as well and this whole area is wet, wetlands as well.
Yeah.
So this was our most direct access without interrupted moments.
Okay. And the road is going to be about, I'm assuming it's going to be asphalt?
Oh, no, no. It's going to be a gravel, just a regular gravel road, the same as the one that's up off of Main Street.
Okay.
There's going to be no asphalt whatsoever on it.
Okay. And it's going to be about 12 feet wide?
Approximately 12 feet area so that they can get a 40-ton pump rig, drill rig in there.
Okay. And what about the vehicles that will be needed to dig that road all the way into where the wells are?
Well, there'll probably be an excavator and they'll probably excavate the material and then fill it in with a clean gravel material.
Okay. But they'll be able to get in on that 12-foot wide road?
Yes, that's what we're planning on doing, yes.
Okay. And when that road is complete, what kind of activity will there be on that road? Assuming for a minute, so you're still up in the year in terms of whether or not these two wells are actually going to deliver what you hope.
Right, right.
Okay. And how long will it take to know that?
Well, if we can get the road built this year and get a drill rig in there and drill the two wells, then we'll do the testing.
Okay.
It'll determine whether or not it'll be feasible or not on after you test the two wells before you do anything with it.
So ideally, to answer that question, ideally, we would hope to have the wells drilled by the end of this year.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah. If all goes well.
I'm going to be neutral, but my wife will probably be hoping that you're unsuccessful.
That's all right.
Okay. So you're hoping to be by the end of the year to have this access road built?
Correct, yeah.
Hopefully, yes.
Okay. And now I've walked out there and directly out behind my house, your road is going to go to the right of my house.
Yes, it will be at that intersection.
If you go directly out through the woods behind my house, there is a lot of change in elevation out there. There was some very, very deep.
Yes, yeah.
Is the road as designed on there or as pictured on there going to go over just flat land or do you have to fill in a lot to?
Well, maybe Mr. Clemens can answer some questions like that too.
Well, let me first say that, I mean, obviously, we tried to minimize any major grade changes, but you're correct, there are a couple that we are going to go through, so we are changing grades in those areas.
Okay.
But we tried to.
Now, there's a couple of places that I think are 30 or 40 feet deep.
Oh, yeah. We tried to minimize as much of that and follow the contour of the existing slope.
Okay, answer that question.
Just to piggyback off, excuse me, are you going to cut the grade or are you going to add?
In some places, we're cutting and in some places, we have to add.
So you have a dozer in there or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
It'll basically more or less follow most of the contour.
Yeah.
Because we're working with conservation on this and we don't want to change it, you know, that much.
Yeah, we have water in the basement if you guys change it too drastically.
Well, yeah, yeah.
That would be the concern I would.
No, and your concern is valid and that's why, like I said, we're going to try, we're following the grade and that's the way we laid out this design.
The material that you're going to bring in, if you bring in material, where is that being processed and where is that being purchased?
That would be up to the contractor. It'd be like a screened gravel type clean material.
It'd be clean material, isn't it?
I'll spec on that if you can.
Yeah, yes.
Where it's coming from.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and the vehicles. And so, once this, assuming the wells are productive, how much traffic will be going in and out of there on a regular basis and what kind of traffic?
No traffic.
No traffic.
The only traffic, once, if the wells work and we have the road in and the wells are in and we get the piping out to the clean intersection by your house, tie it into the system, there won't be any traffic there daily.
Okay.
It'll be, there'll be, I don't know whether it'll be a fence or a chain or something of that nature to keep traffic out of there.
Vehicle control gate.
Yeah, something to control anything in there.
I would say at most, it'd be a pickup truck that the current water department has and at most, I don't know.
Maybe once a week.
Yeah, if that, right.
There won't be any traffic.
So at the.
It's terrible. My marriage should survive that.
At the actual well itself, if you were out there walking around, what you would see would be a gated area right around the well itself. You'd see the well sticking up. It's got to be above the 100-year flood elevations, whatever that ends up being. And then a pedestal for any electrical feed into the well itself.
Okay. Now, I take it you have no idea right now how much water this site could produce?
No.
No.
Okay. So that's a question for another time.
That's if we get the wells drilled and they get tested.
Okay.
Then we'll have a, yeah.
Then we'll be able to tell you whether or not it can be used or not.
Okay. And I'm assuming, I mean, what's sort of the minimum in terms of time, you know, is it, if you dig a well and it's going to last for a year, do you just not dig the well or is that five years, is it 10 years?
No, this well, if it will produce enough water, which I believe it will, it'll be used in infinity.
Okay.
It'll be used all the time. The same as the wells now are being used on the Crystal Well area. They're used daily. Like I said earlier, I don't know if you were here, we're pumping roughly out of the Crystal Well area now between 500 to 650,000 gallons of water a day, which is pumped into the system and it keeps the tank full so that you have the water pressure for your, you know, for your system. And in the summertime, it goes up to 800, 850,000 gallons of water, which is a lot of water. And those wells have been working since, what is it, 1982?
Yeah.
I believe. And they ran from 1982 until 1999 when they put in the water tank. In other words, the men that were working for the water department back then, they were watching the water pressure in the system because the pumps were just pumping into the water mains that we had. There was no residue. I mean, if there was a bad fire or something, they'd probably run out of water putting out the fire. That's why the water tank was constructed. So this is just a, what it would do is it would eliminate pumping all the water from one aquifer and using the other aquifer so that you're pumping water from both aquifers.
Okay. So that's the last part of this question was, will this serve the whole town or you'll now have two locations that will serve the whole town?
The two, the two systems would work in conjunction with each other.
Okay, right.
They would, I forget the elevation of the tank and the water, but I think it only drops six feet. And when it gets down to six feet, either one, two or three pumps will come on, so it maintains the pressure and keeps the tank full. And always, if it's working the way it should be, all the pumps will be hooked to the same SCADA program, I believe it is.
Correct.
And it maintains the level in the water tank.
Okay. And assuming that the extent of the water supply is determined to be worth going ahead, it's going to be connected on Opine Drive?
Yes.
Out near my house?
It'll be connected in that area for now.
Okay. But those are just underground pipes?
Yeah.
Yes. You won't see the pipes. They'll be underground and it'll be all regraded so that, you'll just have like two tire track road going in like they're over to the well site now over off of Main Street.
Okay. Let's see, I think I'm almost done.
No, this is good. This is good.
Well, I hope everybody feels that.
Well, see, the thing about it is, we breathe air when that's free and the second thing in line is water. We have to live, we can't live without water. And when I got, first got on the board, the population increases in Hanson and the wells are not at the limit they should be, but by pumping out of two aquifers, you're pumping less water out of each one and it makes it better for the system. So it'll last longer and longer for the town of Hanson.
Sure.
I want to say one thing, we do need a second water source. The town of Hanson needs a second water source. If anything happens to our existing source like we realized before, we have to go out and Brockton water. And that's the only backup we have is Brockton water. Brockton water is very costly to the town of Hanson, as we realized when we had to go on it because of tank rehabilitation. We need another good source. And through all the scientific methods and engineering and whatnot, this is the best possible site in town to give us a second source of potentially good decent water.
Okay.
So this is all, this is the future of Hanson because we absolutely need it. The Crystal Spring well field, the wells out there, you know, they're good, they're producing a lot of years, but who knows what could happen, you know, in time, so.
Probably be nice to give free water to the next door neighbor.
So this is, this is very important to the townspeople, the citizens of Hanson. We need this and, you know, we're going about it the best way. We have the best engineers on it and we're committed to this project. I mean, it's been a long time coming and we've got to take this step forward. It's time. The town of Hanson's growing. We've got a lot of people and like I say, the only backup we have is the city of Brockton. This is very important.
Gil mentioned the money about the water from Brockton. I have to say this, but was it two years ago, we had to paint the water tank because you're supposed to upgrade them and paint them every 20 to 25 years. And we had to totally go on Brockton water because you had to drain the water tanks so they could steam, I mean, sandblast inside and out to paint it. And we were on Brockton water for three months. And it cost us for three months, it cost the town and Hanson Water Department, it was $330,000 for just water. They charged us $3.81 for every 1,000 gallons of water that were used. I had the girls in the office go back to December, January and February for three months of electricity that we would have used of our own pumps to pump the same amount of water and it was only $30,000. So if you take the $300,000 and multiply it by four, yeah, three, six, nine, 12, right? That comes out to what, a million two?
Right.
Our total budget right now is a million three. So in other words, we wouldn't be able to operate because we wouldn't have any money to pay the help. We wouldn't, other than that, we'd have to raise the price double in order to do any work that we're doing. We're not only doing just this project. We replaced, I think it's eight gates in the last year, I believe.
Eight gates, yeah.
That should have been put in years ago when they put the system in. For some unknown reason, they call it a tap and sleeve gate. It's a two-half piece that bolts onto the pipe and then there's a gate put on in front of it. And then you put a machine on and it drills a hole into the water pipe. Well, that's only one gate. And what happens is, they do this to the water main. And technically, you should have three gates there. Just for one reason, if you go over to corner of Winter Street and East Washington Street, I live on Winter Street, just up the street, but if you go from East Washington Street, from there to State Street, you've got Christopher Lane, Harvey Circle, Puritan Drive, Opine Drive, what's the other one there? Wagon Trail and one more.
Carriage.
Carriage Road. There's only nine gates between Winter Street and State Street. There shouldn't be 20. In other words, when we had the water break there, they're just above Puritan Drive by the hydrant that's still a bump in the road, which I hate. They were just going to pass the pipe, but we suggested, why don't we put a gate in there? And by doing that, we had to shut off 164 houses in order to fix that portion, to just put that gate in. But now, where that gate is there, they cut it completely in half because we can shut that gate off and then go down and shut the one off at Winter Street. And it cut half the times down. But if we had the 20 gates in there, you only have to shut off eight or 10 houses to fix something. And that's the other problem we have in Hanson. And this isn't just on East Washington Street. And this isn't just on East Washington Street. It's all over town. And like I said earlier, we replaced, I think it's eight gates this past year in the town so that we have more control of the water. That's another problem we're taking, trying to take care of and the budget that we're working.
Almost done.
Okay.
If the best case scenario, it's going to take about a year, you think, to dig the wells and...
And test it, probably, yeah.
Determine whether or not they're worth, whether it's worth going forward. How long will it then take to, will this road already be done by then? The road that's going in?
Well, the road will be done before the wells are drilled.
Okay.
Because we have to put the road in so we can get the drill rig in there.
Okay, so that's within this year period?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and, and when the water lines are built, are they, they, I'm sorry if I'm repeating myself. They're coming out strictly onto Opine Drive and then from there they'll plug into the existing?
It'll come out and connect to Opine Drive. And then the water can run to East Washington Street. And also the water main in Opine Drive is connected to, what's that one? What's the road in?
Autobahn.
Autobahn, you know the development off of State Street? That Autobahn Drive is a complete...
Yeah, I think so.
No, it's a, it's a one off State Street.
It's Autobahn.
No, Barber Road.
Barber Road, okay, there it is. I can't remember those. But anyhow, the water is connected from Barber Road to the water pipe that goes by into Opine Drive. So then we've got a cross flow from State Street through into East Washington Street, you know, through that development.
Okay.
Which makes it good because you're cross feeding water. You're not having stagnant water all the time.
Depending on how much...
And Barber Road is off of State Street.
State Street, down.
Okay.
Depending on how much supply we get out of those two wells, they might need to upsize this main within Opine to bring it out to East Washington Street, which I believe is at twelve.
Yeah.
But we don't know that yet.
That's another thing I was going to bring up. It's good that these questions are asked, but if the well does pan out, all right, probably what would happen is we're going to put, I don't know whether it'll be eight or ten coming from the wells out, but we'll probably put a twelve inch main from Opine Drive where you live out to East Washington. But we'll start down at Winter Street because we have a twelve inch water main that comes from the town hall down Winter Street, all the way to the intersection of Winter Street and, and East Washington Street. So what would happen over, over a period of years, we'd replace the pipe on East Washington Street with twelve inch all the way up to the well site, up to Opine Drive.
Okay. And that should improve the...
And that would improve the flow and everything all, all over the town.
Thank you for that, answering the question.
Oh, any, any more questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Kevin McKenna. I live at ten thirty forty, East Washington Street. Do you have any paperwork for us to look at based on your study?
Hundreds and hundreds of pages of paperwork.
What are you looking for? Come together with a book, like highlighting the important things. I'm sure there's a lot of information in it that's worth us, but some of the highlights would probably be important.
What are you actually looking for?
This study that was done to see how it's going to end?
The engineering department.
Yes, so what, what you're holding, that's the notice of intent, that's more on the conservation. And are you looking for a, you know, the reports that we've done recently that say that there's water there and whatnot? Yeah, we have those.
Yeah, those, okay.
Yeah, and, and you guys do too. I don't know if you want to provide copies maybe at, at your office that residents can...
Well, Carol can probably, too bad Carol isn't here. You know, if you want, I'll tell Carol tomorrow or you can tell Carol.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to view, I mean, it's almost what you're actually looking for. I mean, the whole, the stack's like, probably like this.
Okay, is there something that highlights the, the important points? I mean, I'm sure a lot of important, but just to, you know, I just wanted to look at something to see what you're saying.
I'd say probably make an appointment with the water department and then maybe go there and see where it is. Because like I said, you know...
They can give you any information you want.
Yeah.
You know, give a call. You know, give us a call and one of the commissioners can meet you there or the superintendent can meet you there and go over it. Because like I say, it's stacks and stacks of engineering stuff and, you know...
Because this, this all goes back a hundred years. Because a lot of the pipes in the town of Hanson are a hundred years old. Because it was originally on Brockton Silver Lake. And over the years, the pipe has been replaced. And I'd like to see the whole town in Dr. Liam, but we, we couldn't afford that. It's a stronger material and lasts longer and it's cleaner. And another thing that Hanson hasn't been able to do is flush their water mains. Because like I said earlier, just running it off the pumps, you can't flush enough water through the main mains to clean the mains. And last year, we, we did the area from West Washington Street down Franklin Street to Main Street and up Main Street to High Street. And it was the first time, I think, that that's been flushed in many, 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 many years. Because by having the water tank and the pumps we had, and it did help. And that's another thing, if you don't do a flushing program every year, it should be done like twice a year. And Hanson hasn't been able to do it. On the other thought there, well, I'm also trying to get a second water tank up on High Street, another million, million gallon tank. So that Hanson won't be out without water forever. It's, and if any maintenance has to be done on one tank, you'll be able to shut down one and still operate on the other and not have to use Brockton's water. And this is all being figured into the budget and it won't cost any more than what you're paying now. It's just going to bond the money out on twenty, twenty-five and thirty years and pay for it every month that way to do it. And Hanson's water quality, it's, it's some of the best in the country. I've worked all over New England and it's, that's why I'm involved with it. And I'd like to see Hanson set up so that we don't have to worry about it. I don't know how big, how much the population is going to increase, but I think the population is pretty much standstill at the moment. Because there's, there's really not enough buildable lots in town that, that's going to increase the population. Let's put it that way.
What about that stretch down East Washington Street about the pipes? Can, they haven't been cleaned or flushed out?
I'm trying to think of the year it was done. I, I, I'm going to go back and say it was twenty years ago. They, they cement lined the eight inch pipe that's there now on East Washington Street. It's actually in pretty good condition. But they went from Winter Street all the way to State Street. They get, I don't know if we were here when they had the, the, what they do is they tie into the water hydrants and they lay pipe along the side of the road and connect the houses up to, to a silcock. And that's what they feed the houses with drinking, with water for your, for your use. And while they do that, they've got the water main disconnected. And they dig out a section of water main and they put this machine that goes through it, scrubs it and wire and cleans it. And then they got this other machine that goes through it and it cement lines it with about an eighth of an inch of concrete. It's really, it's a nice process to doing it. And I'm, I'm guessing that that was done probably twenty years ago. And I've seen the pipe since cut and it's fairly clean. In other words, there's a little bit of manganese and iron on the sides of it, but you can still see the concrete. It's smooth, I mean, you can take your finger and, and you can scrape it out. But if you had a flushing program, the flushing program would help keep that clean. But that, that pipe has been relined all up the whole length of East Washington Street.
And what would it take to have such a flushing program?
Water.
More water than we?
The more water you have, the better it is to flush it.
Okay.
Because what you do is you open up the, the large steamer fitting on the front of the hydrant and you shut off all the water that's coming into it. And you open up a ten inch main like we have in the winter in East Washington Street. And you open that, let it run wide open. And it puts a stream of water six inches in diameter, probably two thirds across the street. And you run it until it comes clear. And that's, that's what amounts to flushing. But you're using awful lot of water doing it. And I, we used to work in Hanover and we did it twice a year. And it works, it works fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
It may be of interest, but at some point, if you'd like, I can explain from the conservation standpoint...
You certainly can, Phil.
...what the project has involved so far.
Yeah.
If you'd like, I can do that.
Yes, I would love to have you do that, Phil.
I'll just stand here so I can reference the maps and things if you need to. But for several years now, Conservation Commission has been aware of the desired water commissioners to develop another source of water for the town to improve the town's water security, so to speak. And since most of the larger undeveloped areas of town are either under care and custody of Conservation or there's wetlands and things that would be under the jurisdiction of the commission, they came to us very early on and they, they spoke at great length about their ideas, the different areas. And we helped them to decide that of all the areas, this would probably be the most feasible because we would see it as having the least impact on wetlands and other natural resources. But when the details came to us for this area, for how they would do it, we began to work with them very closely. And so all during the early phases up right through now and that will continue, we've been talking very often, either in our regular meetings or informally as needed. And as far as this area is concerned, we're aware that there's actually pretty high quality water flowing through Indian Head Brook here to the point where it supports cold water fish species like truffle, protecting mostly everybody's poison ivy mud and briar, so to say, from people. But the idea is there's pretty good water quality in the area and we agreed that it made sense to look there. And the fact that this area is conservation land points out through the wisdom of probably back in nineteen seventies, there was, I think sixty-four acres altogether was set aside by the town for conservation. And one of the reasons to conserve land is open space and wetlands and all is for the purpose of protecting water supply. And we thought philosophically, why would you protect a water supply and then never ever consider using it? It just didn't seem to have to be a complete equation. Meanwhile, on the other side of town, as Mr. Howard pointed out, you have a, an aquifer and a water supply that's being pressed perhaps sometimes close to its maximum. It would be more environmentally appropriate if there was a balance between some water from here, some water from there, so that the, the aquifer and all the natural resources it protects will be under less pressure overall, as well as providing backup. So back on this here, we were, we listened as they said how they're going to do the, the initial exploration, just ground penetrating sensors of some sort. And we went out, I actually went out and walked and talked and worked with the people who laid out the grid. It was sort of a tic tac toe shaped grid where they did some survey work. And we saw there was some impact on wetlands simply by passing through it. We determined that this is something that throughout the course of the project, we would look at those impacts and any others and say, how do we balance that? What sort of mitigation can we come up with? And so that's been the discussion that's still ongoing now. Yes, there would be impact from cutting roads and reducing the number of trees, things like that. There would be a very, very small amount of wetland filling here. We would need to make sure that it didn't impact the, where the stormwater goes away from homes and things like that. But that's, there is a, a proven formula for having those types of discussions. If you reduce the number of trees here, a mitigation step that would be required, and we're still working on that because we've only just a few days ago filed the notice of intent for, for doing this work here. There would, it would be very feasible to have the water department fund the planting of trees in other areas. There are projects within, both within the property here and elsewhere, a little ways upstream in the same watershed, that could benefit the, the whole local environment. For example, there's one point nine acres right along Indian Head Brook that was set aside for conservation at the last town meeting. We would like to have that surveyed and that has about four hundred feet of frontage right on the brook. Perhaps one of the mitigation steps could be for the water department to fund the surveying and bounding of that property so that we can manage it appropriately instead of just letting it be ignored and it be at some risk from abuse or trespassing and things like that. But there's a list of things that we'll be working with them on that will mitigate whatever impact there is here. And speaking of, of impacts, we want to avoid the impact to begin with. We don't want to have them put a road right through a wetland area, which is, under state law, it's not allowed unless there's a really good reason for doing it and you can really balance the environmental books with a lot of mitigation somewhere else. So let's not do it. That's why they're proposing the road going a long way around to stay on high dry ground. And speaking of resources that are not on the wetlands, we spoke of trees. We worked closely with the, with the ecologist who was out there marking trees and they inventoried every individual one of hundreds and hundreds of trees, the species and the size and so on. And then we went out and we looked at what was marked. And we found some pretty interesting trees, including a red oak, which is the largest one I've ever seen in my life. I've seen quite a few. And it was so enormous, we took pictures, we did measurements, we did some research. There's not very many red oaks in the state of Massachusetts bigger than that. And we think it's actually a tree that could become almost a destination if you want to go for a walk in the woods with your children or grandchildren. It's, it's a place, it's a thing you would go to see. In diameter, it's like four and a half feet. It's massive. And those of you living in there, maybe you know where that tree is. And actually, it would be a little difficult to reach it now because there's no trail directly to it. And we made sure that the road going through it, instead of rushing up close to that tree, not takes a wide sweep far away. And so I imagined it could be like a little foot trail going to it. But that tree was probably growing there when this whole area was just pastures and with stone walls and things. They would allow a pasture oak to grow so the cows would have shade. It's sort of a good old New England landscape and we still have some of it, thank goodness. The stone walls and the trees and whatnot. But we also know that if you leave a tree alone forever, pretty soon, eventually, nature will do something with it. And overall, conservation doesn't, isn't against trees falling down or, or not that you made use of. But there is, there's an appropriate way you can utilize your resources, whether it be water or trees, and just keep the whole system going. So we think that this is a, a responsible manner to do the testing that they need to do. We think that increasing the security of our water supply and whether it be through this or other measures, as Mr. Howard has spoken, it's just a really good thing to do. Got a bottle of water right there. It says Poland Springs, but it's actually water from Hanson. I keep refilling that bottle. And the idea is to have that not become a problem. We've had some droughts like back in the nineteen sixties. Brockton had a horrible problem with Silver Lake being down over a hundred inches. And a couple of years ago, we had a drought here, which our wells survived. But with the margin of safety, we would like to see it be greater. And we think that both from the resource standpoint and the recreational standpoint, this property could both serve these purposes and continue to serve the recreational purposes that already does. The current process to go through that, I found people jogging and it was great, they enjoyed it. We would like to actually improve that and maintain what's there and have it integrate with these roads, whether the wells work or not. And Conservation would continue to control this whole area. Most likely, the legal arrangement would be something like an easement granted to the water department to manage both the road and the underground infrastructure they would put in here. But this, every acre of this would remain conservation land. And we like the idea that it, that it doesn't require any trespassing onto neighbors' property. We do wish to see all due regard during the project beyond for where the runoff goes, if there's like a testing or a change in how the water flows across the surface. Because we, we don't, we want the neighbors to be as happy as they are now living next to conservation land. And we'd like to improve it and have them enjoy it even more. And maybe a few people, it would never be, I'm sure, large numbers of people could have a place to park here and be able to walk around and enjoy it as well. So we, we are going to be working with the water commissioners and CDM Smith to have a, a list of conditions that would apply throughout the project. And we'd like to keep the environmental books balanced and optimistic that we can. So if there's any questions for Conservation, I'd be happy to help you.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is for Conservation or the water. The trees that are in there that are marked now, some pink, some blue, what do they all mean? Do they mean those are going to come down? Do they mean there are certain kinds of trees?
The way I understood it, Matt Tonya Lofstad did the marking... The way I understood, back when Lofstad did the marking, there are some trees that are marked with a metal tag. The original root of the proposed road would have taken those trees down. The root has been changed, so now it's been further away, and some of that will change. There are also, there's also been flagging with blue and then pink tape and so on. That is, I want to be sure about this, and maybe we'll turn it over to Mr. Smith, but the idea is, the idea is that there would be some clearing beside the road. And it may be that besides the trees that would come down to make the road developed, you'd have to remove a few other trees so that the equipment would fit, you know, when you swing around and want to be able to have space. I'm interested in hearing from them what that, what all those things mean. In fact, tomorrow, I think our Conservation Agent will be walking out there with your environmental consultant. There may be more to be learned about that than we know now. But as far as I know, the trees with metal tags would come down. But some of the trees that were tagged before are going to be spared for sure.
Do I, we've never finished all of his questions.
Okay.
Sorry.
We're counting that in order for this to be successful, you have to have both wells for it to go in, right? So if one fails, one works and the other one does, what's the game plan?
Yeah, not necessarily. If, we're gonna, obviously, the hope is to test both. But if one, you know, doesn't test well, but one does, then they would just go ahead and get source approval for the one source.
Okay. The other question I hear is, how many artesian streams are running from back of the conservation land up to the back of the houses at the crossroad East Washington Street? Are quite a few of those are going to be affected by this, do you know?
The what?
The artesian streams?
I'm not sure that would be.
There's always, there's always.
No, there's an intermittent stream in that area.
There is, there is one that I saw myself, and it's on the topographic maps. If you look at a handout quadrant, it shows one flowing from east to west in the direction to Old Pine Drive. This area here is quite wet, mostly green, maypoles and things. And the times I've been there, there has been identifiable flow going in this direction. It probably crosses a kind of a color under Old Pine Drive.
Yeah.
I don't know if there are, how many there are, but there's certainly that one.
Yeah, there's at least the one that's been marked, there's probably the others. But you can see it in this, this area, kind of comes in this direction. This is the drainage stream that goes under Old Pine Drive. So that would be for that, that stream? That stream, yeah.
Yeah, if you go in and it goes to the right where you live, then it goes left again. There's another, there's a brook right there and it runs over to the other road there.
Well, the reason I ask that because I've been there for twenty-six years and twenty-four years ago, I had to put in a French drain because the water kept on rising. And I'm wondering if this water is going to cause the water to rise.
It won't cause it to rise if, if it's working and they pump it. If anything, it might go down. But it's good to know that it's rising because if it is, it's a lot of water in that area.
I had to put a couple, two sump pumps in there and not come with it, it's worked.
It's working there, yeah.
But I went, went away for a weekend with my wife and I came home, and we had like four inches of water in the basement. And I found out from my next door neighbor that her husband was the one that built the house and never should have been built on those, on that property because it was just caused water.
The houses are supposed to be built, the base, the foundation's supposed to be four feet above the water table. Isn't that correct? So whenever the house was built, I don't know.
Nineteen seventy.
Yeah, well, sometimes things that built shouldn't have been.
Yep.
I'll get in trouble again.
No, some problem. She explained to me in detail why her husband built it like that. So, and I fell out the hard way.
I was on the board of health for a number of years back in the late sixties and seventies. And I had Article eleven that I used to work with and write in the little booklet that I worked with. In order to put in a surge system in a, in a foundation, the base of the, the surge system and the base of the foundation or the cellar floor was supposed to be four feet above the water table. And I used to do perk tests like that, and I used to locate the water tables. And some of those houses, I'll be honest with you, my own son lives on the, I can't even think of the damn name.
Puren Drive?
Another one next to Old Pine Drive.
Puren Drive.
Puren Drive. He lives in the first house on the left, the Dempsey's and the Howards. And he's got water in his cellar now. And the cellar is probably equal to the flow line of the brook. How the house ever got built there, I don't know. That was sixty years ago, probably.
Back to your question.
It wasn't old enough.
Back to your question too, when the, when the drillers doing the pump test of the wells, they'll be monitoring the, you know, the wetlands and the drawdown to the surrounding area as well. So it's all information that D.E.P. will need for further permitting.
Okay, and just one last question.
Yep.
That area you're talking about, like I said, I've been there for twenty-six years. We always lose power constantly. Do you have a backup system to take care of these pumps in place?
There will be.
Because on that grid of that section there.
Oh, no.
I've been, I've been there twenty-five years, and I've had a generator that I've had and it runs three, four times a year, thank God. So I just wondered how this is going to affect that on that grid there because it was right on the Hanson handhold, the Pembroke grid there.
No, the thing about it is, what we've done, what we've done, we've installed generators at all the well sites. You know, we even got a generator at the, at the water tank. So because there's communications from the police station and fire that are on top of the antennas of the tank. But we have now generators at the office on east, on West Washington Street. And we have generators at the Crystal Well site to run the pumps. So that anytime the water goes out, these generators start up automatically so that we always have water pressure in the town of Hanson.
Yeah, yeah, but that will be something that we'll, we'll have to consider.
A generator would be installed in there in a small house or something and fenced in so that when the, when the, when the power goes off in there, they would automatically come on if the pumps were being, being used.
Okay, so I'm not going to get a pawn in my backyard?
No.
Okay.
No.
Question on the road over here you're putting in. The road is twelve foot wide?
Correct.
That's what it is? Now, what is the limit of cutting? There's a line out there that says limit of trimming and limit of cutting. I find those flags in the woods.
Yep, so.
Does that mean you're going to cut that much?
We had the survey or mark out our limit of clearing. You can see that these darker lines on this plan. And as Phil was saying, there are, you know, we try to minimize as much as possible, but in order to, you know, match back in grades and whatnot, especially in this area that we were talking about has a lot of change, we had to cut out further in order to get, you know, slopes back at existing grade and make sure we're not, you know, increasing any slopes, so.
So they trim that, that far, all those things, and then pull the roots?
And so that's where we did our tree inventory through this entire thing. So you can see all these dots if you want to look afterwards. They're all numbered, and if they would correspond to a tag that's on each individual tree.
And what do they do after it's done? Would they put loam and seed or what?
Yep, so the area that doesn't have the roadway will be loamed, loamed and seed. We're providing some plantings down in these areas as well.
I think that's the subject for some ongoing discussion with Conservation.
Yes.
Exactly, how we revegetate that.
Yeah.
Some people in this room may know, but back in the nineteen eighties, there was a selective harvest of wood products from this property. Springer Environmental did that. And to walk through there now, you would never know the trees have been cut. So there's, there's certainly forestry practices that we would like to see followed and erosion control practices, as well as road building practices. A lot of the steepness back there is the glacier left of it, some of it, apparently to my eye, and it looks like when the area was developed, a lot of gravel was probably taken out of those spots. It looks like an abandoned gravel pit that now you've got a steep hill, you're going to have to deal with it. But what we will be doing is having some very specific conversations with the engineering firm about what the revegetation plans are. There'll probably be a pretty long list of conditions for actually, because the hearing is still open on this. We have a noticement tent that has just been filed. I just got today the number from D.E.P. So they don't approve anything, but they give it a number so we can all identify it. And in the coming weeks, there will be quite a bit more conversation, I'm sure, on these details.
And the other question I had is the existing trails. Is there any way you could give us the location of the existing trails? Because the neighbors who use the trails all the time don't know where they are and they don't know how they arrange according to this layer of road.
I think we talked about that. It's got to be an engineering feat to try to do that. Maybe you want to answer that because we talked about that the last Conservation hearing.
Yeah. So I mean, so obviously, that's something that we had discussed, and maybe that's a mitigation item, but go ahead.
Right, I will speak to that a little bit because everyone wants to know that too, I want to know it. Yet, the scope of what's being done for the town, the water department, I don't think we had envisioned that it would extend to like mapping trails across the whole property. But what we would like to see is to have these, this roadway integrated into that trail system. It may be that for fairly modest investment, we could show where they connect. And on an ongoing basis, the Conservation Commission would like to see a, you know, a townwide trail network well maintained. Problem is, it takes a little bit of labor and time and money to bring that into existence. We made some trail maps last summer, maybe this summer or maybe when the equipment's all done, that would be another time here to have an intern go in and GPS the trail system there as well. That's what we did last year.
Because what it is, I realize, that they have traverse going down all the trails because to get the survey into the area that you're looking at now, they came in through the end of Old Pine Drive, went up one trail, around the other trail, down, followed everything, always, so the information is available.
Yep. But I think that we developed a program this last summer that we will be using going forward in other projects, which is to have college interns who are available to the town for, at no cost, help us to develop trail maps. And wherever this project leaves off, we would pick up with that program and have a good product at the end.
Mike?
Well, first off, I want to thank the water department for such proactive work. It certainly does put a great future to Hanson if it's a usable water source. But I'd like to understand the, what your expectations might be in, in both wells, using both wells. My first question would be, can you use both wells in tandem?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so that, that seemed obvious to me.
Yeah.
And secondly, what is your minimum gallon requirement per day? I mean, we're running at eight fifty right now. What is your minimum gallonage per day that you could expect to make those wells useful? What would you look for for minimal results? And that's both wells, totality.
Yeah, I mean, we're hoping to see about three hundred gallons a minute out of each.
So that's six hundred, six hundred thousand?
Yeah, six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And again, that's something that we can't answer at this point.
No, I get that, until you get down to the fissures and find the aquifer. I get that. I didn't realize it was over a hundred feet. Wow, that's, that's quite an engineering thing by itself. So have you seen typical, typical scenarios with this, this type of project that we're doing here? Have you seen other projects that have produced outstanding levels of water flow?
Yeah, I mean, you have all spectrums, ones that, you know, produce what you want it to or more, and then others that don't, kind of are a bust, so to speak. Others that produce a lot of water, but the quality's really not, not good. High in iron and manganese, which is typical of this area.
I was going to address that next. If you find quantities of water, to save the sake of argument, three hundred thousand per day plus, what's the feasibility of water treatment? And I would discuss this in these early phases because as Phil knows, he's Mr. Educated on Hanson here, there was actually iron quarried in this area, and indeed, there are some areas with high iron. So can we still use the water in some way through, through water treatment?
Yes, yeah. So if we do find water that, you know, enough quantity, but the quality is bad, it would be, you know, most likely a simple filtration process treatment. And again, that's, that's something that we don't know today, and we can't, you know, necessarily play for right now. But that would be a decision for the water department going forward. Okay, you have the source, we know we can get this much out of it, and it's permitted for this. However, you got to treat it, you know, to make, to meet water quality standards, and it's going to cost X. So those are all questions that we'll learn going.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I'm curious about the analysis. You used a ground radar to, to survey. Can you describe, like, is it a great big fissure that we're going to go and smack that pipe right down the middle? Or is it a series of fissures that you're looking for to show permeability?
No, so what, what we found was there's, you know, there's fissures in the, in the, in the area that we're looking at. But underneath those fissures, we found, you know, pools of water, what they believe to be pools of water, reacted when, you know, when the signals were sent back up. So that's, that's the hope.
Which brings me to my next question. If you do start your testing and you're now pulling water out of that aquifer, and I would assume over the testing period, a lot of that water is going to be replenished, is there a chance that you would see the levels of iron and manganese go down over time during the testing period where just pulling that water out of that area might clean out a lot of the inherent contaminants that are in that water? In other words, at some point, you got to run out of iron and manganese if you're moving the water. Is that something that you've ever seen in other test scenarios?
Not, I mean, not to my knowledge or my expertise. Generally, it, most of the time gets worse, more so in a gravel pack well than a, than a bedrock well.
Okay.
But again, I can't specifically answer on that.
And I don't know if I asked this, what's the minimum gallonage per day that we could make use of this well site in a contribution? In other words, is a hundred thousand something that we would find viable to use to augment the town of Hanson?
Yeah, I would, I would assume so, right, though.
Once they get, once they get to testing it and they pump it for twenty-four hours, they'll measure the, the drawdown as it's being done. And then once you start the testing, they'll test it how long it takes to come back up to the original level. And I've got a water artesian well home that when I'm running eight sprinklers, draws down about a foot in the case. But after I shut off all the water, it's back at the same level in roughly a minute and a half.
Sure, that's nice. That's nice replenishment.
I've got, I get a lot of water there.
How many feet down?
It's only a hundred and sixty-five feet.
Only?
And I've got, well, I've got two other brothers that live in the area, and I've got twelve hundred feet of one-inch pipe all around the three houses.
Holy smoke.
And we, we all use it.
All right, one final question, and this one's for Phil, for Mr. Clements.
Sure.
Do we foresee any scenario where the Wetlands Protection Act could in any way nullify and/or prohibit the progress of this, of this project that we're talking about tonight?
We haven't seen one yet. We haven't seen a barrier to letting this go forward.
That's what I'm looking for, barriers.
Right, we, we're aware that all across North America, there are wells and wetlands in proximity. And if it's, if it's a truly sustainable yield, if it's a, if the safe yield is determined by the property authorities and D.E.P., is truly safe, then the resources around it should be. Just for example, since the early nineteen eighties, we've been pumping hundreds of thousands of gallons a day out of the Crystal Springs area, and we haven't seen an impact on the Poole Meadow Brook watershed or the wetlands near it. There's no significant effect anyway, so we, we, we're optimistic that there wouldn't be one here, but we'll, we'll watch and we'll see. There's a lot of variables that we, we'll only know when we do the testing. But we haven't seen any legal or scientific reason not to go forward with the testing.
And, and it's not somewhat specifically for the testing, but for access to the wells, to that particular area.
Access to.
In other words, the roadways?
Oh.
Yeah, the roadway specifically, Phil.
Well, I'll tell you, the biggest problem we have with roadways is unauthorized particular traffic. And I think we'd probably have better control over that if we.
So I should stop riding my dirt bike down there?
Well, you don't get far, you'll be fine.
Definitely should.
The, the people who manage the state's forests think that, say, every off-road vehicle causes damage, even if it's used carefully, slowly, responsibly.
And I agree with you, Phil, just for the record.
And never mind the. And never mind the noise because air is, noise is an air pollutant. We would like to see protection of all these areas from all the impacts, but passive recreation classically has such a small impact, it, from the environmental standpoint, it's not an issue.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the two wetlands areas in question in the upper left-hand side of the plan. I don't see so much wetland throughout the entire roadway system with the exception of the upper left-hand corner of the plan. Do you see anything there that would be troublesome for you as an enforcement officer of the Wetlands Protection Act?
Those areas where there would be an impact on wetland, because I walked it and I've seen the flagging line for where the rehabilitation was laid out, I've looked at how it relates to the nearest homes and I've said to myself, how do we make sure that we don't either back up the water the runoff and make a problem for someone in the backyard and let the water behave the way it wants to? Because gravity water, they'll do what it will do, whether, you know, with or without our permission and happiness. What we would do is look at that and say, if the answer to how you make the road is to put in a couple of good sized culverts and things, what mitigation would require? Would require the creation of, let's say, that amount of wetland, maybe fifty percent more elsewhere on the site by excavating and creating a new wetland where right now is upland. We want the water to not cause any problems, but we want the resources that are in those areas to be duplicated or duplicated with an extra margin of value somewhere else, either on the site or nearby. That, we were pleased to see that the direct impact would be as small as it is there, but we'll watch that more closely than anything because that's where it shows the most. Plus, it's right near the road, so it'd be easy to put in whatever culverts or other precautions would be needed.
So I want to rephrase my question a little bit and thank you, Phil. You are the expert. If indeed you don't see any showstoppers, let me rephrase that. In other words, you don't see any showstoppers, but there may be further mitigation to make sure that the road goes in. Is that a safe statement?
Whatever it takes to put the road in, we hope they will minimize the impacts. They won't over-design the road, in other words. Just make it as wide as it needs to be and all that, no more. But there will be ways to measure how many square feet are involved, how much fiddle, estimate how many cubic feet of water come off in a heavy rainstorm and allow for all that. And again, any, whatever square footage of a wetland resource area is potentially going to be lost, we'd like to see that recreated somewhere not too far away.
So mitigation would be the answer?
Oh, yeah. It's, you avoid impact if you can. If there's got to be some impact, you minimize it and you always mitigate. And that can mean many things. There's a lot of choices we can do. We want to create if we work with the water department to do that.
So let me go back to the presenter. How do you think you're doing? You're going to get this done? Do you see any showstoppers?
Yeah, no, I mean, we're more than committed to working with.
I'm sure.
Conservation and.
You got an expert.
So we'll do whatever they need and whatever the Water Department asks.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right, that's what I was looking for is I did not want to see the words showstopper.
I'd like to add one more thing if I could, and that is that in the last two years, I would say, I don't know how it's perceived by anyone, but I'd like to think that Conservation has been very open to collaborating in an appropriate way, protecting the resources, but also not unnecessarily delaying work like this. Because if something comes on, we'll actually be reducing the impact on resources in the western part of town. But I think that we have been striving to, as soon as information is ready to present it, schedule right on next meeting and have it all do publicity, publicity go out. But we're not looking to hold this up. There's plenty of, I'm sure, technological and business and weather reasons for things to go slow. But we don't want the local regulatory process through Conservation to be part of the slowdown. We'd like to facilitate as long as we're protecting the resources.
Great answer.
And I should add too, on the state level, there's a lot of state permitting through DEP for new sources that we started the process and then that will continue once drilling happens and testing, then there'll be further approvals through the state to get the source approved, safe yield established, those kind of things.
Now, the state, do they rely heavily on local conservation authorities?
Yes, I mean, from a conservation standpoint, the local authority is the state's.
Right, we protect the resources, but once you get some resources out of the ground in a pipe, DEP takes over as far as talking about what to do from there on.
Well, again, it's a great service towards the future of the town. I want to thank you guys very much.
Is there any more questions by anybody?
Hi, just a quick question. I understand, you know, with the wetlands and all that. I just don't want to go backwards here, you know, just to streamline something I haven't done. I understand the road's going to be going in and if we do strike gold, right, the town needs the water. I get it, you know, I understand that. So it's a yes on everything? You're able to produce the water. What's going to go in that footprint a year from now or two years from now? What's going to be in there? What are we going to have?
Just the roadway.
Just the roadway, no structures? Garages, things like that, anything like that?
There won't be any garages. There might be a small building.
Well, now you mentioned generators, so we got to protect the generators.
Yes.
So we have, we do have slabs being poured, things like that, and just telephone poles going up there.
There's no poles going up there. All electrical, be all underground.
Okay, so.
So there won't be any poles going up there.
Everything will be buried.
Everything will be buried.
So that's my main concern. I mean, I understand water's expensive. If we have to go to Brockton, you know, if this doesn't happen, I understand, you know what I mean? But I want to make sure that this conservation, you know, stays as close to what, you know, we thought it would stay.
We're working, the Water Department is working with Conservation completely. Whatever they want, we're going to try to do.
No, I understand that. We're going to put the road in and then we're going to have, what are we going to have there though? What are we going to have? We're going to have generators there?
All of these, there'll probably be one generator and it'll be located in the place so they'll be far enough away from a dwelling that possibly you wouldn't even hear it.
Okay, is there a water tank going to go up in the future?
There'll be no water tanks there.
Can we get that in writing?
The water tank that I'm proposing is going to be on High Street. Because that's the highest point in Hanson.
Okay.
And working both tanks together.
So no storage there?
No.
Basically, just the wells themselves?
Everything will be pumped from the area. Underground, you won't even see it.
So our current notice of intent with the Conservation Commission brings us through, I guess everything that we talked about today would be access road construction and the, you know, the drilling of the wells and the twenty-four hour pump test. After that, we gather more information if the town, if the Water Department wanted to continue forward, we would need to do, we'd have to put in pipe and actually connect the wells to the existing water mains. That was going to be another NOI submittal.
So those pipes coming out of there, what are those? Are those eight inch, they twelve inch? What comes out of those two?
Yeah, either an eight inch or twelve inch.
Subdivisions and whatnot, okay.
And it would follow the existing roadway.
So hydrants, rubber, whatever that is, things like that.
Along that roadway, yeah.
What we would like to see with Conservation is to extend necessary, a road with pipes and things like that under it, a healthy and well-maintained forest edge that actually would look better as time goes on because you dig a road, obviously it's going to be a little bit ugly gravel and whatnot, stomps and.
Right.
That's a must, I would say.
But there are, but we absolutely would resist the idea of telephone poles. If they're just underground, the storms that we've had can't knock them over. I mean, we want to have a rugged and robust infrastructure that also is aesthetically not ugly. We're with the neighbors on that for sure.
We're talking, you know, this is what we're trying to do here. This is, you know, water for the future.
I get, I get.
Fifty, hundred years, you know, we need this folks, we really need this severely.
I understand.
We're doing it the right way. I mean, I feel that this is the best communication I've seen in town in a long, few years here because between engineering, conservation and, you know, like Donna says, we're trying to get this out to the people because Hanson needs water. We need another water source.
No, I understand. I just don't want to see anybody get lazy when, you know, when the road goes in and all this gets done.
No, no, that never happened.
You know what I'm saying?
Never happened while I'm here.
Well, no, we're very committed to the same. Yeah, we don't want to see that.
No.
And I would imagine some of our restrictions from the Conservation would be future maintenance of the road and.
Right, we wouldn't want to see the camel's nose in the tent and the neck and the shoulders and the hump. We will be watching and trying to predict what's going to be needed, but also how to, how to keep, keep everything acceptable.
Yep.
It's, there's every potential, this could be like win, win, win all around and maybe Brock will sell us less water, but, you know, I consider that a win also.
I don't want to use any of theirs anymore.
No, no, no.
So is there a liaison that will be when this, when this project goes forward? Will there be somebody you can contact or talk or say, you know, this is all we're going to be doing today or, you know, we might be having the machinery come in, you know, these people live down there. I live on State Street, so it won't affect me as much.
The only time the machine will be there is to construct the road and gravel it in. Otherwise.
Parks will be coming out.
Otherwise, there'll be nothing there. There'll just be the little twelve-foot road, basically, the same that you got over off of Main Street.
Yeah.
The only difference being is over there, there is a big, I forget what the size is, a thirty by twenty brick building.
On Main Street.
On Main Street. It's way in the woods by the three cluster wells that are there. We have one well going in for, like, for Main Street, which is number one well, and then it goes in for a thousand feet maybe, and there's a building way down in the back there, but it holds the chlorine that they introduce into the water.
So there's no process and nothing like that, like you said, it's just going to come out?
It'll just be a, look like a cat path, that's it.
How tall, when they finish, how tall are the wells?
How tall of them?
Yeah.
You won't see them there, just flush with the ground.
Okay, because there are a couple of.
No, I mean, they'll need to be above the hundred-year flood elevation. I'm not entirely sure what it is in that location, but.
That's probably almost a hundred feet anyway, so they wouldn't have to be high.
Well, I can't see them from where I am, they're way in there.
Yeah.
I've seen where it's marked and if the diagrams that we see here with the topographic lines in outer field is correct, there's quite a bit of elevation, I'm guessing maybe somewhere.
From where the water is, yeah.
Twelve or even fifteen feet between the low wet areas out in the middle and the actual surface of the ground where the well will be drilled. So I would hope, like everyone else, I would hope there'd be just, if anything, a bump on the ground and if there needs to be an eighteen-inch stump for electrical access, I'd live with that.
If there's a flood and there's a hundred feet back there, I'm sorry to say, we're all in trouble from here to the ocean.
Phil's right, yeah.
Because my house, my house driveway is fifty-four feet above sea level. So if you're talking a hundred feet, I've got fifty feet of water in my yard.
Actually, one final thing. One of the major values that this area provides right now and always has and hopefully will is the ability to store an awful lot of floodwater. We could get, I don't know, a massive rainstorm equal to a grade of what we've had lately and a place like this, a wet area like this, without impacting the high ground around it where the houses are and everything, they have a whole lot of water. That's why that brook runs year round. It's just slowly metering out that water. And by keeping it heavily forested and keeping the ground undisturbed in ninety-nine percent of the area, it controls floodwater. That's one of the interests of the Wetlands Protection Act and we're sure that will continue.
So, is it, huh? Come back, go ahead.
So again, going along the lines of the buried power lines, even your SCADA system does not require lines, it's all radio controlled.
It's all radio operated.
Yeah, okay, just to put everybody at ease as far as that goes.
No, there's no wires or anything going in there. It's all.
Thank you.
If there's nobody other questions, I'm glad to have some, well, I wish there was more people here, but being televised so that everybody can see it in the town, I'm sure that there'll be people that want to come on and ask some more questions. And I'm sure before we're through, I'll have another meeting like this so that everybody can come in and find out what we're doing.
Yeah, the Conservation hearing is still open, but we foresee maybe in one or two more meetings, probably being able to close that, but those proceedings are open to the public.
Right.
The records and the conditions that we set on the project will be a public record also.
Yep. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol.
Mark Vess, V E S S, Hanson Troublemaker, extra V.